I call to order the City Council meeting, the City of Colorado for February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. So, would you please stand?
Stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Present.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hoppy?
Present.
Mr. Stites?
Present.
Ms. Hulteen?
Present.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Here.
Ms. Dozeman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have all members of the council present.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for joining us tonight. We have a very important proclamation and ceremony tonight, a swear of end for our Chief of Police, Chief Murtha. So if Chief Murtha and Judge Randall and Patrick Goff would meet me up at the front.
Want me to hold the mic?
It's my phone. From Maryland.
Okay.
Hi, Andy.
Badge first or oath first?
Yeah, thank you.
We did that last time. Thank you very, thank you very much. No, you better hold it.
Okay, I'll hold it.
So oath first, right?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Murtha, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Murtha?
I, Christopher Murtha?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Upon my honor?
Upon my honor.
As Chief of Police?
As Chief of Police.
That I will never betray my badge?
That I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public's trust?
Or the public's trust.
I will commit to support?
I will commit to support.
And promote the Wheat Ridge Police Department's vision?
And promote the Wheat Ridge Police Department's vision.
Mission, core values, and goals.
Mission, core values, and goals.
I will always strive to have the courage?
I will always strive to have the courage.
To hold others and myself?
To hold others and myself.
Accountable for our actions?
Accountable for our actions.
Ensuring compliance with department goals and policies?
Ensuring compliance with department goals and policies.
And act as a role model for ethical behavior.
And act as a role model for ethical behavior.
I will strive to always uphold the Constitution?
I will strive to always uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America?
And laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Colorado?
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Wheat Ridge.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you. Good. Well, congratulations. Thank you, Greg. (applause) Mr. Mayor? You stand by? I'm welcome. I hope you're wearing your vest. (laughter) Okay, good. Oh, nice bill. Nice bill.
Yeah. Somebody actually ran in and they go, "We need a pen." Come on, I have one. (laughter)
Should practice, I guess. There we go. Thank you. Congratulations. I look forward to having you.
All right, Chief Murtha signed here.
All right. Sign it. You can step up for him. It's a bonus. Okay.
And does he keep that one or?
He keeps it in the spring.
They only have one.
What do you have?
We usually have the ceremonial one, not ceremonial.
I'll give one round to you.
All right, this one's his.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Come on over here. Judge?
Yes, he's going to run one.
Ready, four, three, two, one. Four, three, two, one.
Christopher, do you want?
I just wanted to say that I'm sorry for changing it.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Okay. Council members in your packet, you have the council minutes of February ten, two thousand and twenty, and the special study session notes of February ten, two thousand and twenty. Are there any corrections? Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask for the special study session notes on page four to reflect that council member Urban obtained the consensus to bring forth a recommendation for the grant not to exceed of fifteen thousand to conduct the history structures assessment.
Are there any further changes? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the staff reports, it's noted that Division Chief Lorenz, he's listed as commander, so if we just change that to Division Chief instead of Commander.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Is there anything else in the minutes of those two meetings? And you have those changes, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
The first change has already been entered. The second will be entered in the morning.
Okay, thank you so much. Without any further changes, the minutes stand as corrected. We are now at the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda from the council? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda as posted. We will come to citizens' right to speak. Any citizen who wishes may come and speak with the council on a matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes by signing the public comment roster. I don't have anyone who's signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who is not signed up to speak, who would like to speak tonight? I don't see anyone, so we will complete that item on the agenda and go to our consent agenda item number one. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item number one A, resolution number twelve dash two thousand and twenty, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbance of the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of ten million four hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Consent agenda item number one B, resolution number eleven dash two thousand and twenty, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget and appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of pursuing and funding a historic structure assessment grant. Number one C, resolution fourteen dash two thousand and twenty, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty two E bond fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of four hundred and one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the purpose of awarding a contract to AECom Technical Services Incorporated for a period of January first, two thousand and twenty, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, in the amount not to exceed one million four hundred and eighty-seven and seventy-one dollars, and approving payments for ongoing program management services for the investing for the future program.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda item, and a motion is ordered on consent agenda item number one A, D, and C. Mr. Stites?
I move that we approve consent agenda items number one A, B, and C.
Second. We have a second by Mr. Urban. This is our consent agenda. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number two. Ms. Weaver, would you introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is council bill number zero-three dash two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending section one dash five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning penalties for municipal court violations. At issue, the Colorado Legislature passed House Bill one-one-four-eight in two thousand and nineteen, amending the length of time to which a person may be sentenced for violations of municipal laws. In a prior session, the state also increased the amount of the fine that municipal courts could impose for such violations of municipal laws. This ordinance modifies the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws accordingly.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on an ordinance on second reading, ordinance number sixteen-eighty-five. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do you have any other further staff report on this?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl has a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Please give us a few comments on this.
Very briefly, as the issue noted, the state legislature has acted twice to amend the laws that give authority for municipal courts. And they increased, the prior session legislature increased the fine amount for many years. The maximum fine amount in municipal court was a thousand dollars, and they've raised it to twenty-six fifty, and then there's a very complicated formula for, to increase it for inflation. And most municipalities are not bothering to codify that formula, but instead just putting in the twenty-six fifty, which was the number that probably has increased by a little bit since then. It is very rare for the municipal court judge to impose a fine even approaching a thousand dollars, but this is authority that we want to make sure our judge does have, and so that change has been made. In the last session of the legislature, they changed the authority for jail time from one year to three hundred and sixty-four days. And again, the judge rarely imposes sentences of a year, and has been since this law was enacted when he was going to impose a sentence for a year, has made it three hundred and sixty-four days. So he's always ahead of the curve and has been adhering to that, but I want to make sure our code's so provided, and now it does, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Before we go of any questions from council, I would like to open the meeting open to any public comments. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak at the public hearing on this issue? And I don't see anyone, so I will open this up for questions from council of staff. Do we have any questions before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number zero-three dash two-zero-two-zero, an ordinance amending section one-five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning penalties for municipal court violations, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number three. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce this item? And read what is at issue.
Yeah, sorry, I have number five, not number three.
I've got that one.
Oh, is, oh, I had it, I had that signed up for Zach on that? Excuse me, Ms. Hulteen, I have the, I've made a mistake. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number zero-four dash two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the design and plating of multifamily development and attached single-family homes, case number zero-eight dash twenty-eight dash zero-two. Historically, the zoning code has treated attached single-family dwellings or town homes as generally multifamily development, and very few standards relate specifically to townhome building form. Given the increased prevalence of townhomes and the steady inquiry staff continues to receive, this code amendment updates certain provisions that specifically apply to the design and plating of attached single-family dwellings.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time and location for a public hearing. Mr. Urban, may I have a motion on this?
I move to approve council bill number zero-four dash two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the design and plating of multifamily development and attached single-family homes on first reading. Order published, public hearing set from Monday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. Second by Ms. Dozeman. This is an ordinance on first reading. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to item number four, and I hope it's Ms. Hoppy. Would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number zero-four dash two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the design and plating of multifamily development and attached single-family homes, case number zero-eight dash twenty-eight dash zero-two. Historically, the zoning code has treated attached single-family dwellings or townhomes as generally multifamily development, and very few standards relate specifically to townhome building form. Given the increased prevalence of townhomes and the steady inquiry staff continues to receive, this code amendment updates certain provisions that specifically apply to the design and plating of attached single-family dwellings.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time and location for a public hearing. Mr. Urban, may I have a motion on this?
I move to approve council bill number zero-four dash two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the design and plating of multifamily development and attached single-family homes on first reading. Order published, public hearing set from Monday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. Second by Ms. Dozeman. This is an ordinance on first reading. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to item number four, and I hope it's Ms. Hoppy. Would you please introduce this item? And tell us what's at issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is a motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. At issue, the city's board and commission seats are due for appointment. The positions were advertised in the Wheat Ridge Transcript on Channel Eight, Facebook, and the city's website. Current members were contacted by mail and asked if they wanted to serve another term. All applications were received and compiled by the city clerk's office and forwarded to the city council. In regards to recent resignations, other positions are currently vacant. These include the Building Code Advisory Board, Districts One and Two. All positions were advertised in the Wheat Ridge Transcript on Channel Eight, Facebook, and the city's website.
Thank you, and we will go by district, starting with district number one. Ms. Hoppy, can you give us the appointments for the two positions in District One?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Al Gallo to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending three to two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchinson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Shawna Black to the Cultural Commission, term ending three to two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hutchinson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, would you please provide the motions for District Two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Larry Richmond for the Board of Adjustments, term ending three to twenty-three.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Hulteen. Is, would the clerk please poll the council?
Again.
Ms. Weaver, do you want to vote on this motion?
I did, sorry. It even buzzed.
There you go.
It buzzed you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Mr. Mayor, the motion is again passed unanimously.
Okay, and I'm not sure how these, how the board clears, but whatever it takes to make sure we're on, we're on track.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Urban, please continue.
I move to approve Jason McCullough for the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending three to twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hulteen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
I move to approve Millie Nadler to the Cultural Commission, term ending three to twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
It hasn't cleared.
Clear the board and poll the council.
Still hasn't cleared. Still hasn't cleared.
There you go.
What is the buzz?
I have no idea.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve John Rout for the Parks and Rec Commission, term ending three to twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hulteen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Vivian Voss for the Planning Commission, term ending three to twenty-three.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to propose an alternate. What, how, what's the process for doing that?
An amendment to the motion.
An amendment?
I think you would want to amend.
Okay. I'd like to propose a substitute motion or amendment?
I'm in the motion.
Amend the motion?
Different candidate?
Yep. I'd like to nominate Christine Disney for Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Stites to have a substitute motion or amend the motion to nominate Christine Disney. Is there discussion on the motion?
I would just add that Vivian has served well on the commission and a majority of those that have asked to serve again are being allowed to serve again, and so I would ask us to continue to allow Vivian to serve.
Is there additional discussion? Ms. Weaver?
There is. I actually disagree with that statement. I don't think that her actions on Planning Commission have been becoming of a commission in Wheat Ridge by example of the last year regarding the Uppam situation where she voted in favor of a particular thing and then went against it publicly.
Is there additional discussion on the motion? On the, on the motion, and this is the amended original motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council on?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, pardon me, Ms. Hutchinson?
I agree. I'm, I would. Vivian Voss.
Thank you. Is there any, any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Just so we're clear, this is a motion to amend the motion that I made, so this, this is to vote on replacing the name, and then the next vote would be the appointment.
This would be a motion to substitute the name of Christine Disney for any other name that's on there.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion would be to, to vote for Christine Disney for this position? Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed six to two with Urban and Hutchinson voting nay.
Okay, then we will go back to the original motion. The original motion is, it wouldn't be as amended. Yeah, I mean, would we go back to the original motion?
No, the original motion has been amended by inserting a different name, so now the motion is on the floor to appoint to be Christine Disney.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to appoint Christine Disney to the Planning Commission, term ending three to twenty-three. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, that motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to District Three appointments. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For District Three, we would like to put forward for Board of Adjustment Laura Sikkard. I moved, excuse me, I move to appoint for the Board of Adjustment, term ending three to twenty-three, Laura Sikkard.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I do want to thank Mr. Abbott for his service. I believe he's been on the Board of Adjustment for close to thirteen years. This is in no way slight in how he has performed in that position at all. Currently, he's on another board for, commissioned for District Three, and we wanted to make sure that we kind of not only shared the wealth a little bit, but got some more new fresh ideas and some new fresh people in there. So we had four people apply for three positions, and we felt that this was the best way to do it. So again, thank you, Mr. Abbott, for your, your time and your service on this board.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Deb Warren to the Cultural Commission, term ending District Three, term ending three to twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Yes. Okay.
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver, please continue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Kathy Konitz. Did I say that right? Konitz, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending three to twenty-three for District Three.
Second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. District Four, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Paul Hovland to the Board of Adjustment, term ending three to two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Has to be unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
I move to appoint Carol Matthews to the Cultural Commission, term ending three to twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion?
I would like to amend that.
Do we have an amendment? Ms. Weaver?
I would like to put forward the other candidate for District Four, Chris Schilling.
Second.
Is that the other candidate?
No, we did not have another candidate applied directly to the Cultural Commission. We did have two District Four residents, Jan Southcott and Chris Schilling, that applied for any positions that were available.
He is District Four, though.
Yes, and we were hoping to appoint him to Parks and Rec.
To Parks and Rec? Okay, may I, may I amend then to Jane?
Jan.
Southcott? Sorry, I'm trying, I'm having a hard time. Jane Southcott for, Jan, Jan, thank you. Jan Southcott for Cultural Commission, that's my amendment.
Second.
We have a, an amended motion to appoint Jam Southcott by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? This is the amended motion.
I would like to?
Ms. Weaver?
Again, I feel like Mrs. Matthews displayed some behavior unbecoming of a, of a public official this last year at city council meetings, and I don't think it's appropriate that she continue on a commission.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Could, could you just repeat the amendment, or may I repeat the amendment, or?
Yes, go ahead.
So we're clear? So we are voting on replacing Mrs. Matthews for Jan?
Jan.
For Cultural Commission.
Southcott for Cultural Commission, term ending three to twenty-three. So that is the amendment. Will the clerk?
So we are voting on replacing Mrs. Matthews for Jan.
Jan.
For Cultural Commission.
Southcott for Cultural Commission, term ending 3/23. So that is the amendment. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed five to three. Ms. Dozeman, Mr. Urban, and Ms. Hutchinson voting no.
Okay. May I have another?
Uh, now the.
We need to go back to the original.
Yep. The, the original motion has been amended.
Okay.
And the motion as amended is now for the appointment of Jan Southcott to the Cultural Commission.
Okay, so we are back to the orig, to the original motion as amended to, uh, elect Jam Southcott to the Cultural Commission, term ending 3/23. Is there further discussion on that amended motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Andy Rasmussen to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending 3/23.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman, would you please continue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Chris Schilling to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending 3/23. Second.
Second. I'm really slow at that.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
I move to appoint Daniel Larson to the Planning Commission, term ending 3/23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Nosler Beck. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. For at-large appointments, I recognize Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the at-large appointments, I, I move to appoint Tammy O'Rey at-large to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 3/23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Robert DeVries at-large to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 3/23.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy, please continue.
I move to appoint Nathan Hoppy at-large to the Billing Code Advisory Board, term ending 3/23.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
If Nathan Hoppy is related to Jenny's Hoppy.
Yes, sir.
Under the charter, I'd suggest that that is a personal or private interest that would require her abstention. So I'd appreciate if she could abstain and someone else could be making that motion.
I will.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Dahl and Mr. Urban has offered to make that motion, and I'll.
I will recognize Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Nathan Hoppy to the Billing Code Advisory Committee, uh, term ending 3/23.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Hold on. Do we need to vote for her abstention? Or?
No, no, you don't, Solon. She's announced that. She'll just need to make sure that she pushes the abstention button.
Come and watch you push.
The rare yellow button. Never, never gets pushed.
It's behind the black screen, so.
Does it?
Okay. All right. Please poll the council. Thank you so much. That concludes item number four. Item number five, I believe I'm going to Ms. Hulteen, and if you would please also read what is at issue on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the appointment of the District Two seat to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority Board. At issue, the members of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority Board are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by a majority vote of the entire council. The term for the District Two seat currently held by James Berenberg expires on March 2nd, 2020. Mr. Berenberg has chosen not to reapply for this position. An application for the vacancy was received from Kristi Davis. So I move to, or no, I guess you, do, since it's a mayor appointed, do I still make the motion? Okay.
I'm going to ask you for a motion, so.
Okay. All right. All right. I move to approve Kristi Davis to the District Two seat to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority Board.
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Urban. Is there, um, discussion on the motion? Mr. Stites?
Not discussion. Kristi Davis is my cousin. Would that be something that I would need to?
Good question. Normally, the, the personal or private interest is the first degree of relationship, husband, wife, child. And a cousin, I think, is one degree removed, and so I would say you are, you still, not only may vote, but under the charter, we must vote unless there's a conflict, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that it was public.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank Mr. Berenberg for his service. He has really represented both the district and the city well. And I'm sorry that we are losing him because he's just been fantastic. But I'm also especially grateful that we get to retain Kristi Davis's service because she is an institution of, of knowledge on this. And with something like urban renewal, you know, having that type of continuity is incredibly important. So I wanted to thank Ms. Davis and, and also thank Mr. Berenberg.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number six. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion to approve the appointment of the District Four seat to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority Board.
And would you read what is at issue on this?
Yes. The members of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by a majority of the entire city council. The term for the District Four seat currently held by Janice Thompson expires March 2nd, 2020. Applications for the vacancy were received from Janice Thompson and Jeanette Southcott.
Thank you. And would you please provide a motion on this item?
I move to approve the reappointment of Janice Thompson to the District Four seat of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? I would like to, to express my thanks to both Ms. Thompson and Ms. Southcott for, for applying to serve in this position. And I appreciate your interest and willingness to serve on, on our city government. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item, and please read what is at issue?
Thank you. Resolution number 13-2020, a resolution of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County and the cities of Arvada, Golden Lakewood, and Westminster, Colorado, concerning homeless navigation efforts. The issue, the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to the regional homeless navigation efforts to address the increasing number of individuals experiencing homelessness. In order to best coordinate homelessness navigation among Jefferson County jurisdictions in their efforts to address homelessness across Jefferson County, the partners established a memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation, other than what Ms. Hutchinson has provided us on the at-issue?
We do. Mary Ann is here this evening, our assistant to the city manager, and she'll provide just a very brief update on exactly what this is.
Ms. Schilling?
Great, thank you. It really was covered in the issue statement, but the only thing that I will add is that as part of the memorandum of understanding, there is an obligation of the cities to hire a staff person to be the homeless navigator, or if not, to provide funding in lieu of. And the city of Wheat Ridge, they adopted the 2020 budget, which included a part-time homeless navigator. We're now in the hiring process of that position. Many of our peers are hiring theirs currently, or have just finished hiring. So we should be up and running in the homeless navigation world pretty soon.
Thank you. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this in the public. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I will open this up for questions from council. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. So are we going to be sharing that part-time employee with another city? Or is that just our position?
It's just our position, part-time.
Okay. And how, how well do you think that that is going to be attracting someone that, you know, as far as like that expertise and only part-time?
We're having a lot of good response in terms of the expertise level.
Okay.
It's a benefited position. But we are against some of the other neighboring organizations that are hiring full-time positions. So that is something that is a difficulty, but we are hiring great candidates.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just ask, as we develop the operating plan with the other cities, that we hone on, hone in on specific metrics and outcomes that we can derive from these activities. Because as I, as I see this process going forward, it, it's important that we have, you know, clear goals and objectives as it relates to what these navigators are doing on a monthly and daily basis. From the point-in-time surveys, we know that there's anywhere from 400 to 600 homeless individuals within Jefferson County. And we want to make sure that we're touching each one of those individuals with as much support and services as we can. And I just want to make sure that as we develop this operational plan, that it is very clear as to the metrics and the goals that we have as it relates to helping those that are homeless.
Any more questions of, of staff? Okay, Ms. Hutchinson, I believe a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 13-2020, a resolution of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving a memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County and the cities of Arvada, Golden Lakewood, and Westminster, Colorado, concerning homeless navigation efforts.
Second.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I'm excited that this is moving forward. When I was campaigning, it was definitely one of the, the top concerns from constituents in my district, especially, you know, feeling compassionate concern about the condition that people are living in our community. And I personally volunteered for the point-in-time count this last month. And it was just really, you know, it's, when you go out and you connect with people and understand that they're just having difficulties accessing the services, knowing what's available to them, you know, the fact that we're raising our capacity as a city and trying to coordinate those services, hopefully it will really help make a difference. I, you know, we don't have control here, but I also hope that at the county and state level, we start seeing more funding because, you know, we can only do so much with the coordinator, and we need to see more, more services that are funded. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Ms. So, Hutchinson, pardon me.
On the other side of the coin, I have heard from some citizens regarding their concern for safety. Okay, especially like at bus stops on 38th Avenue. And that has been discussed and things. But there's another side to the coin of the homelessness that's going on. And that is the concern for residents that we have in this city. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, just, just real quickly, maybe to address that comment, it's, it's an important one. And we, we hope that this program will, will hopefully definitely help with, with those issues. And we, we are well aware of the issues along 38th. And the chief and I spoke about that this, this weekend, and they're, they're looking at some, some solutions for that.
I will say that I, I hope that this, this, being able to provide a dedicated person to reach out to this population will not only help us to, to help those people in those situations, but it will also make our community safer and a better place to live. So I think it's going to work hopefully hand in hand and achieve both of those items. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing.
Thank you. Got to get some sandpaper here. Thank you. That, that concludes the, the agenda portion of our meeting. We will now move to City Managers Matters.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. I sent some emails out to city council about this, but want to make sure the public's aware of this. CDOT is currently making some temporary safety improvements to the bridges at I-70 and 32nd Avenue in Wheat Ridge. And it should take about five or seven days, but they're putting metal plates up underneath at the, the bottom of the bridge. If you remember, a year or so ago, there were some of the materials falling down onto 32nd Avenue. And CDOT's afraid that once they start building the new on-ramp to I-70, that the vibrations and such may cause additional debris to fall. So they're, they're thinking ahead and proactive. That's great. They are currently, we've been working with them. They do have plans to replace that bridge in the, in the next year or two, so we're happy about that. But there, there is going to be a little bit of traffic restrictions going through 32nd in the next couple of days. So just be aware of that. I did send out to city council just today, an email to, with some homework for our upcoming strategic planning retreat, which is on March 16th, the 20th, and the 21st. It's a, it's a Survey Monkey that is asking all of you for your thoughts on what the priorities should be and for the community for the next couple of years. So I think we asked you to get that turned in by the March 6th, I think, is what, what I said. So if you, if you would please fill that out, that information will go to our facilitator, Heather Bergman, who's going to facilitate the retreat. And she'll bring that data back to the retreat, and that will be a, a good chunk of what we work on, looking at what priorities you guys want to work on the next couple of years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl?
At the last meeting, Councilmember, pardon me, Councilmember Urban asked me to put together a memo, pardon me, clearly wasn't ready, on open meetings, open records, especially open meetings laws as regards social media. And I'm doing that, and you should see that this week. More homework. And if you, I'll just email it to you. If you have questions, please reach out. Especially with fact patterns that you have, once you've read through it, very often people will say, okay, I read all that, but here's the fact pattern. I got this message, and it came to me in this way, and I was thinking of forwarding it, and what about that? And I'm happy to, that's, that's, I think, really how you learn those two laws, is applying actual fact patterns to them. So I promise I'll have my voice back by the time you call me with those questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that brief report, then.
Thank you.
We will go with Elected Officials Matters and start down here with our clerk, Mr. Kirk Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be aware that the placement of the ballot box by Jefferson County and Anderson Park is proceeding. The entire documents have been signed by officials in Jefferson County, the city of Wheat Ridge, and anyone else who needed to see it. And they're now down to the specifics of what thickness of pad will be poured and that sort of thing. So it should be well in advance of the June 3rd primary election. June 30th, sorry. Primary election, when that box will go into, into use.
Okay.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again want to thank the Public Works employees for their snow duty that they do. And they also work nights, which I know about. I also was able to attend the tour of the new pediatric unit at Lutheran. The mayor was there. It's a beautiful facility. I'm glad to see that Pediatrics is back in the area. And this is in collaboration with Children's Hospital. So they will be able to handle low to medium acuity patients. If there's any higher level, then they ship them out to Children's, as I understand. It's just great to have that in the area because we used to have a Pediatrics unit, and I feel that was missing. And on that note, I just want to state, frequently wash your hands and stay away from sick people. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll stay on this side. Mr. Urban?
I would just add that I took a tour of the, the Pediatrics unit. I would just add that I took a tour of the Pediatrics unit, and they have eight Xboxes there. So, if you have the urge to play Xbox, you can go there and...
Did you give it a try? Did you give it a try?
Yeah.
You're still a kid at high school.
Right.
Terrific. Thank you.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out for the Jefferson County program at Lutheran, a hospital this last week called Health from the Ground Up, where we had the Wheat Ridge Sustainability, along with Vrata and some of the other cities in Jefferson County, as well as all of the growers and food...people...what am I trying to say? Farmers from Jefferson County. And Councilwoman Holtean came, and the mayor gave a great presentation, and I just want to thank everybody for coming out. And I also want to get people ready for next month, which is census. So, everybody get ready. Get ready to be counted. It's going to be a lot of fun. There will be goats.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Nosler Beck.
I wanted to...I was going to talk about the census, but Amanda did that. So, I wanted to thank everybody who applied for boards and commissions and for everyone who has served on them. I have served on the Cultural Commission and on Urban Renewal, and it's an incredible experience to get to know your neighbors and community and serve your community. So, thanks for putting yourself out there and serving. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wheat Ridge Police Department is having coffee with a cop this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. at the Starbucks off of 32nd and Youngfield. I unfortunately will not be able to make it because I will be working, but I just wanted to throw it out there. And will our new chief be making an appearance?
I bet he will. I'm not sure if he'll...
I was hoping that he was going to stick around and be able to answer that, but he flew.
Yep. I know he will. He wants to get out in the community as much as possible, so he'll definitely be at one if he's not at this one.
Thank you. Ms. Holtean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, Diane Robb elected to not renew her position on Cultural Commission, and I just wanted to thank her. She's been a tremendous force and has really elevated arts and cultures in our city, and I just am really grateful for her, and I know she'll continue to have a presence in our community. And anyway, I just wanted to thank her. That was a huge contribution to our community. Secondly, I wanted to just say I noticed that there are residents moving in at West 38th, so that is nice to see that there are some residents moving in there. I think they're still doing some construction, too, but that's exciting. And then I also just wanted to mention, in one of my national newsletters that I subscribe to, I actually saw the job description for the Neighborhood Engagement Specialist that we're in the process of hiring, and I'm just excited to see that. That's an outcome of the NRS, and I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, how we move forward with the Neighborhood Engagement program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo the thanks to all the people who applied for boards and commissions and giving us some tough choices and lots of options. So, thank you to everybody there. Had a great time at Hacienda, Colorado last week, and that's a great addition to...I've heard nothing but great feedback, great addition to District 3, great addition to Wheat Ridge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
I have nothing new to add, so ditto to everybody else's.
Okay, well, I'm going to recap them all anyway. So, I was at the Pediatric Unit with Ms. Hutchinson. Congratulations to Lutheran Medical Center for bringing that on. That's a great asset to have back in our community. The Meet Your Farmer event, once again, at Lutheran, that Ms. Weaver was attending, was a great, and it's really great to see that our community supports their urban agriculture, and I think this is really going to be a stronger emphasis and a stronger force in our community, and I think that's really good for all of us. I will echo Ms. Weaver that the census is coming up. Being counted is very important, and if there's any questions you have about that or any hesitation that you have and/or questions that you have about it, I guess, please contact the city. We've got people that are trained to answer those questions, and we want to answer those. And finally, I would like to welcome Chief Murtha. Glad to have him on board. Hope we have a very safe and peaceful tenure, and he's here a long time in our community. So, if there's no more business to come before us tonight, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.